I call this meeting of the Blue Springs Planning Commission to order. Ask that you please rise and join in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone that's here this evening, those that are watching on television at home. I'll go over our agenda for this evening. We have the consent agenda, which this evening consists solely of the minutes of the last meeting. We have four public hearings. One is on J. Wolf Auto Sales, or two of them are on J. Wolf Auto Sales, and one is on Enterprise Interiors, and one is on Richard Meadows. We will follow those public hearings with preliminary plat for Richard Meadows, and that will conclude our meeting. So with that, we'll go to the consent agenda. Are there any additions or corrections to the meeting minutes of the last meeting?
Move to approve?
Second.
Have a motion to approve and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. If those are approved. We're going into public hearings, and before we do that, I'm going to go through the procedure for a public hearing. We'll follow this procedure very closely for all four public hearings. I will open the public hearing, after which I will call on the city attorney, Mr. McDonald, for the list of exhibits. I will then call on our staff to make a presentation. They will be limited to 10 minutes for their presentation. Then we will ask the applicant to make their presentation. They also will be limited. They will be limited to 15 minutes. After that, those that would like to speak in favor of this will be recognized. They will be limited to five minutes for their presentation. So you need to collect your thoughts if you're going to make a presentation. We will enforce this time limit. Then opponents will have the same time restriction of five minutes. We ask for no redundancy. If you agree with something that someone up here is speaking, just raise your hand. No applause, please. So with that, I will open the public hearing for the J. Wolf Auto Sales. Mr. McDonald?
Mr. Chairman, do you want to do the rezoning and conditional use together?
Yes, please.
For the rezoning, RZ 9-0-9-2330, the city has eight exhibits. Number one is the staff report with attachments. Number two is the affidavit of publication in the newspaper. Number three is the application with attachments. Number four is the 185-foot notification map. Number five is a list of names and addresses of property owners within 185 feet of the site. Number six is a copy of the letter sent to those property owners. Number seven is Title IV Land Use Section, Blue Springs Code of Ordinances. Number eight is the 2003 Comprehensive Plan. With regard to the conditional use permit, CUP-9-0-9-2329, the city again has eight exhibits. Number one is the staff report with attachments. Number two is the affidavit of publication in the Blue Springs Examiner. Number three is the application with attachments. Number four is the 185-foot notification map. Number five is a list of names and addresses of property owners within 185 feet of the site. Number six is a copy of the letter sent to those property owners. Number four is Title IV Land Use Section, Blue Springs Code of Ordinances. Number eight is the 2003 Comprehensive Plan. Those are all of the exhibits the city would offer into the record at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. Mr. Allen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the commission, you can begin before this evening are the two requests from BS Future Company LLC for J. Wolf Auto Sales and Service, again, the rezoning from GB, General Business, to RC, Regional Commercial, as well as the conditional use permit request for expanding the existing used car sales and service use to include Vehicle Repair Limited. Again, both of these are required in order to move forward with their request to add that Vehicle Repair Limited designation. As you may know, back in 1993, the property was initially developed as a Saturn dealership. Earlier this year, the dealership became no longer affiliated with the Saturn brand. They are still continuing to operate their service and used car sales on the property and looking to expand that use to include that Vehicle Repair Limited designation. The property is, as you see here, is located at South Outer Road and 15th Street, specifically 1500 Northwest South Outer Road. Zoning around the property includes a GB, a general business, SO, Service Office, as well as some MF-14 in nearby area, kind of category to the southeast there. Again, the applicants propose to continue the primary use of the property, which is vehicle sales and service, but they also propose to add paint and bodywork as an accessory use to that, including one paint stall, and well as bodywork to occur in up to four of the 10 total vehicle service stalls. The remaining service stalls we use for that vehicle servicing, including engine, wheel, and brake work, as well as other minor vehicle maintenance. The applicants did provide a proposed use statement with their conditional use permit application. There may have been some confusion. We did inadvertently include the older version of that. It's a one-page proposed use statement that's right before the longer three-page proposed use statement, so I would direct your attention to that three-page proposed use statement, which provides a little more detail and references the proper vehicle sales limited versus vehicle sales general. Again, it talks about the conversion of the existing service stalls to that bodywork and paint booth, as well as an explanation of what their intended revenues, monthly revenues, would be generated by those additional uses. They're looking to expand those to about 12% of the total monthly revenues, and we have a condition, in the conditional use permit recommendation, that points to that. So again, in order to make the use as it currently stands, let alone the additional Vehicle Repair Limited, the change in zoning to the RC Regional Commercial is necessary, and therefore, staff is recommending that the planning commission make that recommendation approval to the city council. Secondly, with the conditional use permit, staff does recommend approval with 10 conditions. I just wanted to highlight some of those in particular. Page four of eight on your conditional use permit staff report. Talks about access. City engineer had noted that the western access, existing western access to the kind of that expanded area of parking does not currently comply with our general standards for design of an access, driveway access throat. You can see the highlighted portion there on the right side, that is the east side. There are two parking stalls currently in use. There's a condition as part of the recommendation that would remove those two stalls in order to mimic that western side of the access. So specifically, you can see here, this protected throat is not present here, and staff is recommending that that extend further here, remove those two stalls. Landscaping is another area of interest. Here's the landscape plan that they've submitted. An alternate or alternative landscape plan is being requested due to the buffer depth shortage in two areas, as well as the significant plant unit shortage for every plant unit requirement as part of the code. Landscape plan provides total 510 plant units, which is significantly below the required 1400. Staff has provided a table to that effect. And again, there is additional landscaping proposed from what's existing out there, simply the fact that remains that they do not meet the UDC standard for landscape plant units. I highlighted there the westernmost northern buffer or property area. They are looking to expand that area from the current six feet to seven feet. You can see what's being proposed for plant units there. Just wanted to show that in juxtaposition to what's immediately west of there, under construction, the Blue Springs Pediatric Clinic. That is a 10-foot wide buffer, and you can see the plant units being proposed there. So in terms of the existing parking and proposed pediatric clinic, you can see how there is some proposed buffer on both sides with the proposal before you tonight, as well as the previously approved pediatric clinic. So in terms of the buffer area and how it interacts with existing or newly constructed uses, this seemed to be kind of the most important area for our consideration here and your consideration tonight. What's identified there, it's called Buffer A, the Transitional Buffer to the West, in your table on page five, so that's what we're pointing out there. Finally, at least I think finally, just a moment here, questions about parking. The numbers are a little bit perhaps not as accurate as we could have been counting individually all the parking spaces. This kind of shows you the existing parking as it currently stands, and then again, the reconfigured parking, this is not a very good image to kind of show the changes here. Although in the discussion, the staff report, we pointed out some of the, I guess for lack of a better term, I don't like this term, but of course I'm going to use it now, triple stacked parking. You can see here where three cars would fit in one space. Same here with that center vehicle not having access, any way to get out if it were to be parked in. So that's some of the reconfiguration that's being proposed and recommended by staff here tonight to remove some of that and just have the standard double parking in some of those areas. But as it stands, they need at least 106 spaces for parking, which leaves whatever is remaining to be for their display area. As they are currently showing it, to give you some a little more correct numbers, and perhaps they can correct me if I'm wrong here as well, they've shown 95 spaces, therefore need to add at least 11 parking spaces from what you're seeing there. And that will obviously just decrease their display parking area, but again, that's, if they can, they need to meet that 106 required parking spaces, and then whatever's remaining can be used obviously for display. With that, again, there are 10 conditions. Staff is requiring approval. With those 10 conditions, walking through some of those, talking about how each of the maximum number of paint booths and auto body repair booths, also talking about damaged vehicles, where they can remain and for how long and how many, other applicable permits. And number four on page seven of eight talks about that referencing their 12% total monthly revenues would be derived from auto body repair and painting uses. Staff, again, kind of giving some leeway to require that no more than 25% of that should be generated in that fashion. That's certainly up for discussion for your consideration tonight, but presumably that would give sufficient leeway for that 12% fluctuation, perhaps one way or the other. And in terms of how that could be enforced or monitored, we have some precedents already set with our redevelopment modification plan, where we talk about affidavits and other financial information that has been submitted. As you recall, with the redevelopment modification plan, applicants need to provide sales tax information, the fact that they are increasing their income or income tax, their property tax values, things of that sort, and therefore, there are some methods that we can utilize to monitor or enforce that if need be. So with that, again, staff recommends approval with the 10 conditions, and certainly open for any questions.
Other questions for Mr. Allen?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
On the parking?
Yes.
I know they are short on parking spaces, but if we take away the triple parking, that's going to make it even more, even a larger difference then between the required parking spaces and the spaces they have.
Correct. They'll be losing...
Because they'll lose quite a few spaces behind the triple parking.
I think just 10 spaces is what we are seeing.
They'll lose 10?
Lose 10.
Okay.
So in terms of reconfiguring, how, so it's, again, there's still some ample parking to meet the minimum parking requirement, it's just how they would deal with their reduced display areas.
Okay. And on the, I don't know much about auto body painting. I'm assuming though that that does, there are some emissions through that. Is that regulated by the state?
That was...
Who regulates that stuff?
That was our catch-all condition about number, condition number six. All, the paint booths shall comply with all applicable regulations.
But who does that?
I'm not entirely sure, hence the generic nature of that condition. I confess that perhaps they have some information in terms of how that's regulated.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Phillips?
Mr. Allen, you answered one of my questions as far as how we were going to monitor this income split, but I'm confused a little bit here. Because they're not enlarging the footprint of the building, what is triggering the landscaping and the parking requirements to not just be, remain as they are, grandfathered in?
Sure. Essentially, the change of use, the change to that Vehicle Repair Limited, although it is an accessory use.
The conditional use...
Conditional use permit, the rezoning, those are all the things that are triggering. They're removing their legal non-conforming status and making them having to come into compliance in this regard. And again, primarily with that conditional use permit, looking at essentially the site design, not necessarily the building, because a building is not changing, not expanding, like you're saying, you know, by 750 square feet.
Right, because that's usually what triggers bringing something into compliance.
If it's 25% expansion, or 750 square feet expansion, and that would require a site plan design review. So in this case, they're not required to go through that, just that use in and of itself requires a conditional use permit and a rezoning. And those are the things, now we're looking at landscaping, parking, access, things of that sort. And that's why, you may have noted, with alternative landscape plan, we made some notes to that, but we're not recommending any kind of massive modifications to what they proposed, simply stating what's occurred and what they're presenting, and leaving it up to you for any kind of dialogue with them in terms of modifying that if need be.
Okay. Because I just don't remember us ever with a rezoning or going back and addressing the number of parking spaces or the number...
Conditional use permit, adding that new use on the site is what's triggering that.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question. Could you back up to the pediatric center? There was a lot of landscaping in the buffer area. Was that a requirement that was put on the pediatric center?
As far as I recall, again, I don't have the final approved numbers in front of me, perhaps are on there, but difficult to read. They, I believe they met all the minimum requirements of the landscape ordinance. So what you're seeing there is the, at least the minimum, perhaps more, but at least the minimum was required.
We have requirements for a buffer, something between the...
Oh, I'm sorry. Correct. The buffer you see there, the 10 feet, was not required per the landscape ordinance because the zoning there is general business, and the current zoning for the J. Wolf Auto Sales is also general business, so there's no buffer requirement between the two. That, again, was their preference, that you're seeing there, the 10 feet with the landscaping.
There's no requirements put on pediatric center that won't be placed on J. Wolf for a buffer area.
Well, there is, as noted, they do not meet the plant unit requirement for that buffer, but they are requesting that relief through the alternative landscape plan. But again, as I'm noting here, the buffer width is being widened to meet the seven-foot buffer depth, so they are going to have the minimum width, they will just not have the minimum plant units that are required. I can show, page five of eight, talks about Transitional Buffer to the West. North half, that's what you're seeing there highlighted. Buffer A is what's required, and there's a note that says, "Note: Buffer being widened to meet the seven-foot buffer depth or width," and that is what they're proposing. So they're proposing to meet that size of that buffer. However, they're required to have just shy of 78 plant units, and again, they're showing just a minimal amount in there. They're not meeting the minimum requirement for the plant units in that buffer. So they're having the buffer, just not the plant units.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Yes?
Mr. Allen, I'm too concerned about how we, recommendation number four about keeping in line with the amount of income that is received by painting versus car sales. elaborate a little bit further on how that's going to be regulated. And condition number three is a real concern of mine, due to the major arterial road of 15th Street that runs north and south, and the outer road, and the fact that the topography of the land lays quite low in the sense that if there's an abundant number of wrecked vehicles on the east side of the facility, it's going to be obvious and visible to 15th Street and people on the outer road. I'm wondering how that will be governed.
In terms of where they'll be located or how long they'll be there, are you saying just enforcing that condition?
Well, where they'll be located is a suggestion I have for later, but in regards to no more than six damaged vehicles may be located on the exterior of any, exterior of the property at any given time, and no vehicle shall remain on the exterior longer than 48 hours.
Correct.
How is it that that's going to be looked after?
Much like any other municipal code that we have, it'd be through our code enforcement. Primarily, again, our planning staff would be aware of these conditional, these conditions as part of this conditional use permit. But yes, there is some matter of self-policing, neighborhood policing, as well as city staff policing that would be required to make sure that that's occurring. Now, again, these are simply recommendations based on other similar uses in the area, as well as similar conditional use permits from the past or otherwise, but again, these are, all these conditions are certainly open for your consideration and modification after hearing from the applicant. Again, a lot of this is based on discussions we've had in terms of what their proposed use is going to entail, and just general observations from that regard.
Thank you, Mr. Wolf.
Mr. Phillips?
Can I follow up a question that has, you were talking about this, it occurs to me, is there a definition that we've got for damaged vehicle? I mean, how damaged is damaged? You know, if you've got a couple of employees back there that have cars that have, you know, odd colored doors or something like that, you may create a, you know, put them out of compliance unintentionally.
I think the city council's going to take this up next week as part of their discussion. On an unrelated note, that is becoming a common concern with the definition of damaged, inoperable, wrecked vehicles, and it's, we don't have a specific definition in terms of percentage of damage, what's damaged, but just in terms of operability, and perhaps the applicant could identify what they consider to be damaged in terms of helping maybe frame what they would consider vehicles that could or could not be placed outside versus ones that would be worked on, again, more regularly in their shop. I guess I, without knowing specifically, here's a picture of a damaged vehicle, here's a picture of one that's not. As you read what their proposed use is, and they're talking about minor dents, things of that sort, I think what we're insinuating is based on their statement, we would consider the types of vehicles that they'll be working on as ones that would be damaged, if that makes sense. So I think they're helping define what that damage would be. So looking at this, I think I had that in here, let me, just a moment.
They're working on fairly...
Yeah, well, they talk about involve both cosmetic damage and damage to vehicles' mechanical parts, and again, that would be one way to define this, and how we would be defining it as well based on what their, their general operations would be on the site. So again, it's...
I just don't want them to inadvertently be out of compliance just because they have some cars parked on it that somebody might consider damaged.
Sure.
They're not planning on working on.
Sure. And again, this is something where we wouldn't just drive by and if we counted seven, what we would, you know, seven vehicles, someone would call in complaint, said there's seven out there, not six, and we wouldn't just walk, you know, drive in and write a ticket and put it on their windshield. It'd be something we'd have a dialogue with them in terms of how, how they might be out of compliance and how they could correct that before moving to the next enforcement stage. So hopefully, it's not as black and white as perhaps one might like, unless, again, we can look at further defining that, but for fear of setting a precedent...
I just don't want them to have some kind of a police data where we're down to every day count.
True, and that's why we've left it fairly generic, and I believe that's why the municipal code is that generic as well. It's kind of one of those, to a reasonable person, it's damaged. And again, then we can start arguing who's reasonable and who's not, but that's kind of how we operate with a lot of the codes that we have here in the city.
Mr. Allen, wouldn't it be a vehicle that has been written up or has a ticket for repair in their workshop, could be a nothing?
That could be one. That could be one.
If it has a design, had a design for a repair...
Correct.
...in a written form or fashion, then it would be considered a damaged vehicle.
That would be my understanding, but again, perhaps the applicant can clarify what they work on, but based on their written statement, they're working on things that even just have minor cosmetic damage, but that's still damage. So yeah, that would still qualify based on what they're saying here. I don't, conversations with them, I don't believe they'll be seeing, you know, 90% total vehicles that are, look like they've been in some train wreck. We're just talking about things that are, just have some, again, minor cosmetic damage or damage to their mechanical parts they may not even see from the exterior.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Do we have the representative of J. Wolf? Please make your presentation. You need to be sworn in, please.
My name's Roy Farchman, 4520 Madison, Kansas City, Missouri. I'm with the law firm of Farchman-Dykes, representing the applicant. Also with me this evening are Jeff Wolf, chairman of Wolf Automotive Group, Jeff, Barry Hart from Byers, Gunn &amp; Hart Architects, as well as Doug Farchman from my office. Mr. Chairman, members of the commission.
Okay. Scott?
You may have to help me here, get going. Oh, there we go. There we go. And then just, here, see, there we go.
Scott went through and laid it out fairly in good detail. Wolf Automotive Group has been in business some, over 50 years since 1954. They operate dealerships in Kansas City, Kansas City, Kansas, Springfield, and St. Louis. This site was originally developed by Sunny Hills as a Saturn dealership in 1993. Wolf Automotive Group purchased all of the Saturn dealerships of Sunny Hills in 1995 and took over this site. In a perfect world, Wolf would still be operating the Saturn dealership, but as you all are aware, early this spring, Saturn came out with a public announcement that they might consider eliminating the brand of Saturn, and that announcement really basically chilled... And that announcement really basically chilled the Saturn dealership for Wolf Automotive Group. So Jeff Wolf, at that time, elected to terminate all of the Saturn dealerships with General Motors. So we're trying to make the best of what we have, and so the site has been converted to a, right presently, a used car sales and service, and... which is marginally economically feasible. To make it a better operation and to make the bottom line work, they have... they want to add a collision center with this one paint stall and four service bays. Wolf Automotive Group operates a major collision center in Kansas City, Kansas, on State Avenue. So the bulk of the work is done out there. The other dealerships in town do ride-ups for bodywork, but don't do the bodywork themselves. In this particular dealership, to make the numbers work, Wolf Automotive Group feels that they need to generate some income from bodywork. But again, that will be a necessary use under the rezoning, and it will be this limited repair and will not be their major source of revenue. The major source of revenue will be the sales, as well as the service. The site was described to you in Scott's presentation, so we'll just kind of skip over this slide. This is an aerial of the site. Wolf, until earlier this year, owned both of these lots, but sold the westerly lot to the pediatric group. And again, the surrounding zoning is general business, both the east and the west. To the south, it's a service office. This is just a photograph looking south at the dealership. This one is looking from the east looking west. The view from the southeast. This is the view from the south. Again, the view from the west, and another one from the west. Again, Mr. Allen went through the current zoning is general business, and under... after the Uniform Development Code was adopted, I believe in nineteen ninety-six, the... that use actually technically wasn't permitted. Car sales weren't allowed under general business. What we wanted to do is add the bodywork as an accessory use, but because sales and service were no longer permitted use, the only way we could get there was by rezoning to regional commercial. And regional commercial is... that zoning is the... under your comprehensive plan, that's your desired zoning for the properties south of There are no improvements to the site with the exception of adding this paint shop on Again, I'm flipping through these sides, slides. We've already gone through the explanation of these. Now, on the site plan, one of the conditions... we agree with the conditions with a couple of clarifications and maybe changes. One of the conditions was to reconfigure that westerly curb cut on outer road. It is our request that we simply eliminate those two parking stalls. This is a... from a construction standpoint, a cost standpoint, this is a minimal investment by Wolf, and Wolf does not want to go to the expense of adding some kind of a curb cut there or additional curb cut construction. We'll simply eliminate those two parking stalls. And again, we will then eliminate that triple stacking that we were talking about and eliminate those ten parking spots. Point of clarification on Mr. Allen's presentation, the... we'll come to it, on this alternative landscape plan, the plan that he was... had put up on the screen was actually the plan that was in compliance with your landscaping requirements. That particular plan was going to... our cost estimates on that exceeded fifty thousand dollars, just to put in the landscaping. And so Wolf came back with an alternative, alternative landscape plan, which we'll be showing you here in a second. And at the present time, as you can see from those other pictures, there's virtually no landscaping at all. This plan that we're showing here is actually the landscape plan that Wolf is proposing. The budget cost on this, as you'll notice, on the south, we've eliminated virtually all of the plannings that were in that earlier plan, and have limited the plannings on the west where the pediatric clinic is. On the westerly side where that additional parking is, Wolf has agreed to saw cut and take out some of the existing pavement and curbing there to increase that buffer area. So they are going to expend those funds for that improvement. This is the... which Mr. Allen showed you. This is the landscape buffer that the pediatrics people are putting in, so that westerly border will be buffered. Again, this is the strictly compliant plan, which is the one I believe that Mr. Allen was presenting. And we had that drawn up and costed out, and it was simply cost prohibitive. Some fifty thousand dollars to put this in, and it's an existing site that was permitted back in nineteen ninety-three, and has been that way now for some fifteen years. And so the... just comparing the two plans side by side, you can see that, you know, significant reduction has been made in the plannings, especially to the... to that south area, which is just a grassy vacant area. And in order to get up to meet the standards of the current landscaping requirements, we would have had to, for lack of a better word, plant a forest to the south to make that work. We just don't actually see... we don't see the need for that from a city perspective and certainly not from Wolf's So to recap, we wish to rezone the property regional commercial, obtain a conditional use permit for vehicle sales and service, conversion of four of the ten service bays to bodywork bays, addition of one paint booth. Landscaping and aesthetics are important considerations. However, strict compliance is cost prohibitive. The alternative compliance landscape plan offers a compromise that enhances aesthetics while minimizing cost. Addition of the body shop necessary to the site to remain a viable business and a productive member of the Blue Springs community. And I have nothing further.
Any questions?
I've got a couple of questions. First off, where would these wrecked vehicles be on the outside lot when they're waiting to be repaired?
Jeff, you want to comment on that?
We don't really care what they do. They've got to be sworn in.
They have to be sworn in.
Barry and Doug want to be sworn all three in.
They have to come in and be sworn in, please.
I'm Jeff Wolf. I'm the chairman of the Wolf Automotive Group. Appreciate you hearing this tonight. We're really ambivalent, you know, on where the cars are parked. Really, the way to describe this is kind of like a body shop light. This is for our customers on this side of town who have a damaged door. You know, the bigger jobs are going to be towed to the main collision center. I mean, you won't see total cars sitting out here, so... but, you know, these are cars that'll all be drivable in, you know... So if you want to put them on the west side of the building where they're not seen from Fifteenth Street, that doesn't bother us. You know, we're flexible.
I just would like to see them tucked away somewhere where they're not sitting out...
They're not going to be on the east side for sure, because that's going to be retail display space for automobile sales.
Which makes sense.
It'd either be in the back of the building, or if we unblock completely, we can put them on the side of the building, on the west side, too.
And I'm assuming since you're repairs, you're referring to ding doors, painting a door.
Right.
Crumpled up fender, that sort of thing.
You know, major hits, so to speak, will be...
So those vehicles won't be around very long?
No.
I mean, this is like an overnight or two day...
I mean, the only thing I could see sometimes, if you've all been in accidents, sometimes it takes a day or two for your jester to come out. You know, the car's towed in, the jester has to look at it. To me, that's only timed. Once we get the approval from the insurance company, it's boom, it's out the door.
Okay. The other question I have concerns the percentage of business that you're anticipating. Paperwork that we saw from you was twelve percent, and I see cities stuck twenty-five percent in here. I'm assuming that you are anticipating twelve, maybe at the most fifteen percent then?
Right. And I think probably the direction the city... if it becomes a bigger business, we don't want to, you know... I can never see it being more than twenty percent, because auto sales, you're talking fifty thousand dollar automobiles. These repairs are two and three thousand dollars. So percentage-wise, I think the ten to fifteen percent is where it's going to live. But one month, you might not sell any cars, and you get, you know, on an annual basis, that's where it lives. One month, it may differentiate a little.
Okay. Then my third... the third thing I wanted to talk about was the landscaping. I understand that you all feel it's cost prohibitive to be planting a forest out behind the building, but there's got to be a happy medium here, because it seems to me that we're asking your new neighbors to do landscaping, and you're all not doing anything. I mean, there's virtually no landscaping to the south, and there's none to the west. There's got to be a happy medium here somewhere.
Where we're at, this thing is marginal right now, and it's... we're just trying to make it work. If we can make it work great, otherwise, we're just going to sell it, the property, see if we can propel it for another use, and I don't know what would come in there. We're trying to keep twenty-five people employed in Blue Springs and create... you know, the one thing we do, we create sales tax for the city, which, you know, because there's going to be millions of dollars worth of revenue if we're selling automobiles here. Other businesses, I have to tell you, aren't going to generate that kind of revenue. Typically, in a community, a car dealership's the number one revenue driver in a retail business, just because of the percentage cost of a vehicle versus other, you know, household goods or whatever.
Well, now you're giving me next message. You're telling me that you can't afford that, but you're going to be generating a ton of revenue.
Revenue's different than... revenue's different than income, you know?
Profit is different than income.
Yeah, bottom line.
Right. We're talking about sales, and that's what the city should be interested in, because they get their sales tax based on sales, not if we make a dime or not. If we bring in a million dollars worth of revenue, we may not make money, but the city's going to get their percentage of the sales tax.
Well, I think it's, you know, as I said, we're asking the neighbors, your new neighbors, to put in and abide by the city code on their landscaping, but I'm not seeing any... anything here, any attempt to get anywhere, anything in there, not even a tree or a bush. I mean, there's nothing here.
You're talking about in the south or the...
The south and the west. What I'm... what I have here shows absolutely nothing to the south or the west.
To the south is the green buffer. That's a grass buffer right now.
Yeah, it's vacant.
Yeah, it's vacant, but it is grass.
There's nothing to the west between your location and the pediatrics.
And remember, to the west of the pediatrics, you know, Wolf sold them that property. I mean, that was the Wolf property at one point in time.
But they have a requirement to lay that landscape.
Right. And Doug, it's our understanding, and maybe the staff can clarify for us, but if the earlier party has put in the buffer, do you require a double up on the buffer? I mean, would we also have to have a comparable buffer to the pediatrics under the ordinance? It seems that we read something that maybe we don't.
I can't recall the specific ordinance, the citation to it right now, but I'm nearly positive that there is, in fact, an ordinance that says where two adjacent properties, there needs only be one landscape buffer between those two. So where one has been required to put one in, you don't then again double that buffer and since expanding it to create two buffers, where one would get the job done.
I understand what you're saying. Maybe staff can clarify that.
And that's what we're trying to... excuse me.
No, that's fine. That's fine. I just want to make sure we're being fair and equitable here.
Right. That was the illustration with showing the landscape plan that was proposed for the pediatric clinic, because that would show the buffer that would exist on the west side of our property. So it would... they would have a buffer creating already based on what they were required to put in. So if we were to put another one there, at least for that section where they had their requirement, it would just double up.
And what about a couple of trees to the south? Something in there? I mean, I'm not asking anybody to go out and plant a forest. I'm just saying...
I don't mind putting three or four diest trees in there just to...
You know, just something to spruce it up a bit.
Just as long as it's not craziness, that's good.
It looks like a pasture right now.
Susan, I have a quick question. Scott, what's the...
I'm sorry.
What's the credits that's going for the green space?
Credit for the green space?
Yeah, is there any green space credit on this one?
No, because there's no... there's no open space requirement. There'd just be an open space requirement. We're looking at plant units when we're talking about landscape buffers. Referring to Commissioner Calpepper's question, there... yeah, there's some fuzzy language in terms of who is responsible for what portion of a buffer, but if you're looking at the buffer between the pediatric facility and Jay Wolf, we're looking at seven and seven, so fourteen feet total. Right now, there's ten and seven. There's the buffer, but not the plant units.
Well, I was referring to the plant units.
Sure. And again, without knowing how many plant units are in that ten-foot buffer, which I don't have in front of me, it's hard to say how many would be required in total. But typically, we've been looking at, I hate to say doubling up, but something to that effect. We've been looking at the buffer widths as being perhaps in total, but not the plant units. So plant units would still be required for both, but the width of the buffer, we've...
That's what I thought.
Again, that's...
That's what I thought.
It's kind of open to interpretation, but that's consistently what we've been doing in the past. And I should clarify, I apologize for any misleading comments earlier. Appreciate Mr. Farchman pointing out that I had the wrong, wrong version of the landscape plan up there. I apologize for that confusion, but you all do have that in your packet, as he was showing on the slides there. The condition use permit in and of itself does not require full compliance with the landscape code, as you showed in one of the slides, kind of change of use is what we're looking at as kind of that middle ground that we're talking about here. So there's some opportunity to dialogue here in terms of where those numbers could land. Strict compliance with the code is not entirely necessary, just based on the condition use permit.
And I understand that, and I do appreciate that. And as I said, I do appreciate the fact that, you know, nobody wants to go and plant a forest. We don't need anybody spending money that doesn't need to be spent. But I would like to see something back on that south side.
That's fine.
You know, stick a couple of trees back there.
That's fine.
Something so that it's just not gully looking.
And likewise, could you become somewhat in compliance with the western boundary to the pediatric center, whatever landscaping is required on your side of the...
Well, I think that goes back to the original plan that we showed, which was also... well...
Can we see the...
We're showing a couple of trees there, too. So would you be... I think Wolf would be agreeable with putting a couple of trees in that buffer area as well, and then some additional plannings to the south. But again, you know, cost-wise, the comply... the strict compliance with the code, you know, it was... our bid was in excess of fifty thousand dollars, and Wolf had this drawn up.
Yeah.
He told the landscape architect, I want to comply with the ordinance. And we, you know, you know... but when we got the plan back and saw the extents of... the extent of the plannings required, as well as the cost, it just didn't make any... I mean, just, we couldn't see how that would work.
There's considerable planning shown on this, this on the south side. How far down does the pediatric property go? Does it go all the way down to the end of your old property?
know, it was, our bid was in excess of $50,000, and Wolf had this drawn up, he told the landscape architect, I want to comply with the ordinance, and we, you know, you know, and, but when we got the plan back, and saw the extents of, the extent of the plantings required, as well as the cost, it just didn't make any, I mean, just, we couldn't see how that would work.
There's considerable planning shown on this, this on the south side. How far down does the pediatric property go? Does it go all the way down to the end of your old property?
There, if I can point, I mean, their property line...
Yeah, just point to the, on the...
Their, their, the original lot line was here, between, between, this is lot one, and this is lot two over here, and the original property line was right down here, so, so, so the pediatric line goes right down through here.
So it does go all the way to the end of your property? The depth to the south side is the same?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, are there other questions?
I am concerned about the wrecked vehicles, and I know, we've gone back and, you know, we've started discussion about, you know, how do you define it, and I understand that you're doing mostly minor work, and it sounds like you'd be open to a recommendation that they all be parked on the west side of the building, I just want to confirm that, because that's something I would like to see, I'm going to ask for later on, because, and if you wanted to discuss that, I wanted to give you the option right now, but with so much traffic on 15th Street, I just think that since you have the room, and you have the parking, and it's of no problem to you, I just wanted to see how you felt about that.
Yeah, I mean, to me, kind of the west and the south corner would probably be the ideal part, that way you can't see them from 15th Street.
Exactly, and then you can't see from outer road, because you have four or five rows of cars.
Right.
Great.
So kind of like on that, like, actually, there's literally six of them sitting on the west side. We're flexible, I mean, but the one thing I want to reiterate, they're not going to be total cars sitting there, I mean, because those will go to Kansas City, Kansas, and...
I'm curious how you happen to ask for this type of facility at this location, you have other locations that you're not planning to do that, why at this location?
Just geographically, it would be at both ends of the city, they're both, except, we're a quarter mile, about a half mile north of I-70 in Kansas City, Kansas, so for distribution of the card is real simple, for the insurance company, we use, we're direct right for like State Farm, and Fireman's Fund, and Farmers, so they direct the customer to the, so for Eastern Jackson County, we're missing a lot of those customers, because we don't have a body shop in that area, they're not going to make the customer go all the way to Kansas City, Kansas, we think it'll generate additional business that we didn't get, just as the location.
Well, and another point too, the Saturn dealership in Olathe...
You've closed, haven't you?
That facility's been totally shut down.
Quick question, two quick questions. First off, debris from the cars that have been fixed, they're all going to be stored, trash can ears enclosed, and tires, it's stacked up at the back of the building, like it shows in the picture here, it's going to be removed, and also, on the show car pad that you're showing here, that is going to be level ground, it's not going to be raised.
Right.
Double check.
It's already there.
Yeah, I figured that, just double check, and we've had a problem with that before.
Wait, it's like maybe six inches or something, I mean, it's a concrete pad.
It's a concrete pad, that's all.
Right, it's not one of those elevated things.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak in behalf, in favor of either of these issues? Anyone that would like to speak in opposition to either of them? I'll bring it back up here for any comments on the record.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead.
Sorry, one of the things that, on number four, on staff recommendations, and the number 25 percent has been put in there, and after talking to the applicant, it seems to me that we can reduce that, the applicant is saying 10 to 15 in his presentation, I don't see any reason to have 25 in there.
Hey, you did say no more than 20.
No more than 20.
Right.
So I'd sure like to move that down to 20.
May I make a comment?
Mm-hmm.
I would be against that.
Would you?
Yeah, I don't want us to get into that level of trying to find bigger business, and, you know, if you have a rough winter, let's say you have a lot of ice, and now they mind it 25 percent. I just think, when they say in their statement that they're looking at 12 to 15 percent, to give them a little bit of leeway, I just don't think we need that. Personally, I just don't think we need 25 percent, I think 25 percent is fine.
Well, whether you say 20 percent or 25 percent, you're still policing to a certain degree, the amount of, the amount of oversight is the same.
Yeah, I guess we'd rather keep it 25 percent.
Any other comments? Mr. Phillips?
I just want to make a quick comment to the applicant, I'm very happy that you're trying to make this work, and that you're keeping these jobs here in town, and you didn't just close the plant down like you didn't lose in Olathe, and I hope we can make this work.
Thank you.
I'd just like to make one other comment, too, I, I know we're talking a lot about, about the neighborhood of the west, but that is actually new development, this is one that's been in existence since 1993, it's a tough economy, they're just adding, they're looking to inform to what's going on today, and we're potentially, I mean, I think the staff is pretty reasonable in terms of the landscaping, and I agree with Susan, I think a few trees would be nice, but I think to go for what would be the full amount, 50,000, is totally unrealistic here, and we need to try to work with our, with our good corporate citizens in town, as Ken said, they're not closing, and he's right, if they do close, who knows what would go in there, and I just think we need to be reasonable about the fact that this is an existing business, they're willing to tweak it a little bit, we've had, you know, probably severe recession, it's a great correction, and, you know, obviously that's one reason why the Saturn dealerships are going out of business, so I think we need to be reasonable.
But you do agree that a couple of trees back there...
Yeah, and I didn't ask the applicant, but I don't know, I drove by there today, there's quite a bit of green space, is that a lot you would look at selling at some point?
Probably not.
Okay, because I mean, obviously, you would look at a forest back there, and then five years, sell, sell a lot, because it's ridiculous, but, but I, I think, you know, a few trees would make sense, you know, just...
We agree with that.
All right, any other questions or comments? Close of public hearing. We'll take number two first.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I move for approval of the rezoning, RZ 9092330.
Second.
There were no conditions on that one.
We have a motion to approve in a second, have a roll call vote.
Commissioner May?
Aye.
Culpepper?
Aye.
Franklin?
Aye.
Haney?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Abbott?
Aye.
Hennig?
Aye.
Banks?
Aye.
Trozen?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
All right, been unanimously approved, we'll go to agenda item three.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, I, as stated before, I, I'd like to see, since the flexibility is there, I would like to see all the vehicles that are there for repair work on the west side of the building. In regards to the landscaping, being that the project was built and approved prior to today's UDC, and the fact that the zoning needed to be changed for them to add a paint booth, I agree in not requiring them to bring it all up to today's landscape requirements. They have been a good corporate citizen of Blue Springs for 16 years, and we're very happy to keep them. I would like to see some kind of happy medium in between that. They're proposing 300 more units, we're shy, they're 415 units away from matching the I'm not as concerned with landscaping in the buffer area as I am beautifying the outer road and 15th Street. As, as a thought for conversation before we get to a motion, if we're shy of 415 units, I'd like to propose some kind of happy meeting, that we could try to get another 100, 150 plant units out of them, to just do our best to increase it even more so than what they are saying, but yet not near as much as what our current UDC would require them to.
Can you clarify where you, which, exactly where are you talking along 15th?
I would like to...
Or along the outer road?
Both, I would like to see more plant units spread out amongst both of the main roads.
And not to the south or the west?
Not necessarily to the south. I commend Mr. Wolf's efforts in suggesting that he would be willing to put some trees out in the great big buffer area, but that's a big expansive gray area, and I think that any additional plant units would be much better spent along the side of the road, where there's curbs and green area.
Do you want to have any type of screening with the plant units of the repaired cars or to be repaired cars, that you're still be able to see off of 15th Street going down?
I'm not suggesting any type of screen for the repaired cars.
Well, I'm talking about with, with any type of trees at all, you don't want anything on that, that green space area.
Along 15th Street, if we were to increase plant units, my ideal is just shrubs, and obviously, no trees, because that would block, you know, the cars that they're trying to sell, but, yeah, does that answer your question?
I'd rather see a few trees on the, on the lawn in the south, rather than, you know, a few, a few shrubs that are probably going to die, because they're not going to be kept right, they just never are, out there between the road and the cars.
I am in agreement on the number though, 145, 50, and come up with a happy medium to do the buffer and 5th Street.
One way that it could be proposed is that we increase the plant units by 150 units, and we just allow staff to approve that, and take it out of our hands. They're well versed on our feelings, and just let them approve how they choose to spend those units.
Mr. Hennig, why don't you take a stab at making the motion?
I shall, Mr. Chairman.
Before, just one more comment, though, I think some direction should be given as far as on the south side, I've heard a little bit both ways, and I think the, the plan that we saw that would be in compliance would show at least five shade trees along that, along that south as buffer area, so as far as what I would throw out is compliance, at least five shade trees along that south side.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I'll move to approve CUP 9-09-2329 with the following staff recommendations. Staff recommendation number one, number two, and number three, actually, number three should read, "All vehicles on site for mechanical repair or bodywork or painting shall be parked on the west side of the building." Paragraph, recommendation number four, shall remain the same. Number five, number six shall remain the same, number seven shall remain the same, number eight, number, number nine shall remain the same.
Wait a minute, are we, you know, they suggested that they take, that they just take out the two spaces and not be forced to have four, which I would agree with.
That's correct, I didn't recall that. I would like to make recommendation number nine, read that those two parking spaces simply be eliminated. And number 10 shall remain the same, and I...
There is no recommendation currently addressing the landscape.
I would add, staff recommendation number 11, that pursuant to the landscape plan, units required and proposed in cumulative total graph on page five, that the applicant increased the number of units by 150, and that a portion of that 150 shall be used to buffer the south side of the property at staff's discretion.
Whose discretion?
Staff's.
Can I make a comment?
Yes.
I just have a problem with throwing out an arbitrary 150, not knowing what the cost is, and I go back to my original comments in terms of what we're doing to this business, and, you know, I think, I think the staff has worked with them already, you know, I would prefer more that we let the staff work out where the existing plant units that they were going to provide be reallocated on the project, I think they know what we're trying to do, we'd like to have some on the south, and maybe a little more buffer on, on the west, and again, I go back to, this is not a residential area, I mean, we're so concerned about buff, you know, a buffer, this is going to be regional commercial, so, again, I go back to the today's economy, and the fact that we're just casually throwing out 150 plants, I just have a problem with that.
We have a motion on the floor, do we have anybody that will second that motion?
Second.
All right, now we're open for discussion.
I'd like to agree with Mr. Franklin, and in discussions that we've had over various committees and things like that, I think we're putting more on staff here than they would prefer to handle in giving them this kind of discretion, they really want us to make these kind of decisions wherever possible, and I think it's a very good compromise to get them to add the extra trees that they've agreed to, and remember, this is an existing site, if they, they could come in here and do a lot of different things, and not have to add any landscaping at all, so we're gaining by whatever we get.
I agree.
Mr. Chairman, my intention when, when I was discussing this with the applicant, was that they put in three to five trees across the back, period, I hadn't, and I don't think that they need to plant a forest, I don't think we need to have so much up and down 15th Street that you can't see, you know, we've got to make sure their business is, remains viable. It appears to me, from the information shown to us with the pediatric plan, that there's going to be ample screening there for the people going in and out of that business, I just would like to see a couple trees on the south side.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to amend my motion and remove the last recommendation, it was my sense that many of us wanted some more hearing comments, it doesn't sound the same, so if I would, I would like to do that.
I amend your motion, remove your recommendation.
Remove the last recommendation. You second it, would that...
Yes, I can.
But we do want to make sure that the applicant does put trees on that south side.
We haven't specified any number, I mean, so...
I tried, and perhaps I went for too much pursuant to some of your comments, so...
But what I'm saying, do we need to put something in there to, your motion, exactly as it was, except for the last one, just ask them to put in five additional trees, or five trees on that...
Well, we just say five trees on that site, then that way they can take it from the existing.
Then we also have to designate the size caliber of tree, and how do you want to restrict it?
I don't care, you know, I don't, I don't care, because they grow.
Recommendation number 11, the applicant is to put five trees on the south lot.
Five trees, no?
I would like to clarify that if we're keeping in with the requirements of the code, that we designate them as shade trees, there is a significant difference.
Yes, there is.
Exactly, was my point.
The comments that we were making, I think we will be able to reach what we're trying to achieve if we specify the shade tree.
Shade tree, what's normal, inch, three-quarter? Two and a half?
Okay. Two and a half.
Two and a half inch.
I'd like to amend my motion again, Mr. Chairman, five, two and a half inch shade trees on the south side, that is the last time I've amended my motion.
And I'll second that amendment.
Thank you very much.
We have a motion and a second, is there any other discussion? All right, let's have a roll call vote in that place.
Commissioner Franklin?
Aye.
Haney?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Abbott?
Aye.
Hennig?
Aye.
Banks?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, have approval.
I can't thank you very much.
Five trees.
Man.
All right, let's move on to agenda item four. Open the public hearing for Enterprise Interiors. Mr. McDonald?
Mr. Chairman, our Enterprise Interior City has 80 exhibits. Number one is a stack of floors attached.
Number, thank you. Number two is the affidavit of publication in the Blue Springs Examiner. Number three is the application with attachments. Number four is the 185-foot notification map. Number five is a list of names and addresses of property owners within 185 feet of the site. Number six is a copy of the letter sent to those property owners. Number seven is Title IV Land Use Section, Blue Springs Code of Ordinances. Number eight is the 2003 Comprehensive Plan. Those are all of the exhibits the city would offer into the record at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. Mr. Hawley?
Good evening. The much anticipated wind turbines. I think most of you remember the wind turbine discussions in 2008 and even some in 2007. And this particular approval is for a conditional use for three wind turbines located on property that is on the southwest corner of East Walnut Street and Magellan Drive. By way of history, one of the questions that's been asked several times is why are they back? We thought we already approved that. And actually, what was approved previously? And that was approved, the Planning Commission recommended approval in July and then the City Council approved in August of 2009. An ordinance that allowed for micro wind turbines. And within that ordinance, it requires that when wind turbines come through, they have to go through a conditional use permit. Hence, the applicant is now coming forward with that conditional use permit to allow the three wind turbines. The wind turbines meet the ordinance in every way with the exception that we have not confirmed one item. And that particular item is noted on page four of five, the northernmost tower. This northernmost tower needs to be set back from this property line, a minimum of 60.5 feet. The applicant believes that he does meet that. However, we haven't gotten that confirmation. And he will need to meet that. If he, if for some reason he couldn't meet that, then he would be required to either reduce the height of the tower or ask for a variance. He will get the confirming information from surveyor prior to building permit issuance and move forward as is appropriate at that particular point. So, the only condition, staff is recommending approval, anxious to see micro wind turbines in the community. And the single condition that we're proposing is provided on page five of five, and that is prior to the issuance of the building permits, the plans must confirm that the applicant has met the 60.5 foot setback from the north property line closest to the northernmost wind turbine. And with that, I stand for questions.
Other questions for Mr. Hawley?
Does a part of the conditional use permit where they require to supply a site plan, the bases are currently out there, correct?
The bases are currently out there. Yes, they are.
So I guess I, I didn't quite follow. Either it is or it isn't. You're measuring from the base, right?
We are measuring from the base.
So why, why can that not be determined at this time? If a, if a, the site plan was submitted, what distance was shown on the site?
Because they have not, and I'll let the applicant address that. The surveyor hasn't, the surveyor, excuse me, hasn't come out and just confirmed that northern property line with the city. They know the range that it's in, but they haven't confirmed it yet. They believe that they will be in compliance, I will tell you that. They think that that, that when, they were with us all the way when we were writing the ordinance. So at the time when the base went in, they did have some measurements done, but, but at this point, they couldn't confirm it. The applicant, I'm sure, can address that question as well.
Okay. I guess I just have a little uncertainty as far as the approval process because you gave us an alternative, possibly lowering the height of it, moving the base. I mean, there are several alternatives that could exist, but we're basically giving it on a good faith that that would be completed and done at the time of the building permit. That was just my observation.
Excellent.
Thanks.
Okay, other questions or comments?
Is it also correct that the neighbor that that would affect would be the City of Blue Springs and their maintenance facility?
Yes, it is.
And not another privately owned business?
Yes, it is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Hawley? Could the representative for the applicant please make a presentation?
It is Ben Ryan at 2108 Southwest Wall, Blue Springs. Really, the presentation's been made several times and I think Scott and everybody's got everything up here. One of the things that we'll address when we go to permit is the distance. We have measured it, we have confirmed it. And when we apply for the permit, that will be confirmed with the site plan.
You have measured it?
Yes, we have, physically.
What did you measure?
We actually have 62 feet. What we, it's actually 64 feet to the city's fence, but the property line is actually two foot back from the fence. So we have 62 feet from, and the base is four foot, the tower's 45, and then six foot of the blade sticks above, which is the 55 feet. Of course, the base being 30 inches round, I doubt that it's going to break, but the fall of the tower still could hit that 55 feet.
So you're confident enough in the math that you've done that you're okay with the staff recommendation?
Yes, correct.
Mr. Ryan, are you the surveyor?
No, I'm not.
He's the applicant.
I'm the applicant.
You're the applicant?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, are there other, other questions or comments? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Bring it back up here for any comments on the record. Close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Culpepper?
You didn't ask for testimony.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. Anybody in the audience would like to speak in favor of this? Anybody that'd like to speak in opposition?
Are you ready?
I'm ready.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for approval of the conditional use permit, CUP 1009-2365, Enterprise Interiors, subject to the staff recommendation.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Have a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Parker?
Aye.
Abbott?
Aye.
Henny?
Aye.
Banks?
Aye.
Trozen?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
May?
Aye.
Culpepper?
Aye.
Franklin?
Aye.
Haney?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Okay, it's been approved. Okay, we'll move on to agenda item five and six. I will open a public hearing for Richard Meadows. And Mr. McDonald, would you like to give us the exhibits?
Mr. Chairman, with regards to the rezoning on Richard's Meadows, we have nine-
Eight.
Eight. A number of different ones. We have eight exhibits. Number one is a staff report with attachments. Number two is the affidavit of publication in the Blue Springs Examiner. Number three is the application with attachments. Number four is the 185-foot notification map. Number five is a list of the names and addresses of property owners within 185 feet of the site. Number six is a copy of the letter sent to those property owners. Number seven is Title IV Land Use Section, Blue Springs Code of Ordinances. Number eight is the 2003 Comprehensive Plan. Those are all of the exhibits the city would offer into the record at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. By the way, number, item, agenda item number six is preliminary plat for Richard's Meadows. We will hear those together, even though one of them is a public hearing and the other one is not. May, Mr. Hawley, I mean, Mr. Alan Alzner.
Yes, indeed. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. As, as you just noted, there are two requests from the applicant, one for the rezoning of the just over 17-acre property from RE Residential State to SF7/RO, Single Family Residential Restricted Overlay, as well as the preliminary plat, a replat of Richard's Creek Estate, first plat lot one, to what we're now calling Richard's Meadows, lots one and two, sort of modify one lot to two. Property, as you see here, is located at 4200 Northwest Valley View Road. Again, as I mentioned, just over 17 acres in size. There's one existing lot, as noted, and again, two are proposed with the preliminary plat. The applicant is requesting this rezoning to move from the RE Residential State to the SF7 with the restricted overlay. The new zoning would be consistent with the zoning of the budding properties. The smaller lot with requirement of the SF7, which is 65 feet, would allow the creation of this additional lot without requiring a variance. As you may be aware, as noted in the staff report, back in August, the applicant did apply for a variance to the UDC to vary the lot width for the RE, the residential state, from that 150 feet to a much smaller to allow two properties to be located in that existing zoning of the RE, one at that minimum 150 feet, the other at just 12 feet in width at the connection to Valley View Road. That was denied by the Board of Adjustment, and therefore the applicant is here before you this evening to request a rezoning. And by rezoning that property would be compliant with being able to create two lots at the required minimum 65 feet in lot width at Valley View Road. They are also proposing, again, with that SF7 designation, a RO, a restricted overlay, which would limit the development of property to two lots, as they've noted, with one single-family residence per lot. So again, for total two residences in the proposed RO area. Applicant did provide that in a written statement titled Reason for Restricted Overlay, again, identifying that maximum allowance under that restricted overlay of two lots. Staff does recommend approval of the rezoning. Again, the comp plan does show that this land is proposed for low-density residential uses, one of which is already existing and a second which is proposed. Designation indicates that it's appropriate for single-family residential uses with that zero to seven units per acre. Again, that proposed zoning is consistent with comp plan designation. And further, the single, surrounding property, obviously there are several single-family residential developments around there that have that same designation with SF7 zoning. Since this is a restricted overlay, there are some conditions that staffers recommending as a part of the rezoning, five in fact. Those are somewhat, I'll check here. Those are somewhat mimicked with the, in the preliminary plat, conditions as well. But again, the five with the restricted overlay zoning identifies that two lot maximum, as noted by the applicant. Again, that the base zoning requirements of SF7 would still apply. Again, no additional lots would be permitted except through the rezoning process to amend or remove that restricted overlay. And finally, the applicant is agreeable to removing contractor equipment to, from the property, again, except pickup trucks or equipment temporarily being used with the development during construction. Same with vehicles of a certain weight or more than two axles would also be prohibited. So I think a lot, some of that is in response to some of the neighbor concerns that were originally aired at the Board of Adjustment meeting back in August. So those are the recommendations and conditions proposed with the restricted overlay zoning, rezoning that is. And then moving on to the preliminary plat, again, laying out some standard conditions, same conditions as I just mentioned, as well as standard conditions for applying for a final plat. There is one clarification related to stormwater detention. No detention or public improvements are required. However, city engineer has required the developer verify the sanitary sewer easement that's shown on the preliminary plat. Again, it should be at least 15 feet wide, but needs to be verified as they move forward to that final plat stage. So again, staff has recommended approval of the preliminary plat as well with six conditions, again, referencing some of the easements and buffers as noted in standard plat language. So with that, I'm open for any questions.
Questions or comments for Mr. Allen?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Culpepper?
I'm looking at the plot plan. Can you show me where on that particular diagram the lot line would be? I'm, I, I can see it on the one, but I'm having a hard time seeing where it is in reference to the proposed house, excuse me, in the proposed barn. Yeah, I'm looking at-
Here's the, this is the preliminary plat as you're referencing, and then there's the plat plan you had mentioned.
Yeah, if you can show me, or even on that one, if you can show me where that driveway comes down, that, towards that property line, is the driveway all on, the driveway that's shown on the plot plan, is that all on lot two? Yeah, I'm-
Boy, I would defer to the applicant, I think, in terms of identifying specifically where those are. That plot plan was one that was originally submitted several months ago. That was in relation to, I know, the Board of Adjustment, the variance request. How that lays out with the new lot configuration, I don't know if I'd call it more of an estimate on that plot plan, but I'll defer to the applicant if you don't mind to clarify that. But again, it would be a shared, obviously a shared access for both of those properties.
Looking at the plot plan, I just can't quite figure out this, they have a long driveway that circles around the proposed house, but I don't know where the other house is or where the property line actually ends up.
Sure. And with the final plat, they will need to identify where that access will be, and then further limits and no access beyond that. And I'll let them answer that, hopefully.
All right, thank you.
Other questions?
Mr. Chairman? Scott, in regards to the Board of Zoning Adjustment Public Hearing?
Yes.
I understood what the variance was for and what the board denied. But was there any discussion at the board level or the findings of the board that the applicant could go through the rezoning process and, and that the proposed property be divided into two lots and comply with the city's Unified Development Code?
Yes, that was discussed. I, I have the minutes in front of me. I don't recall if it was specifically discussed at the Board of Adjustment meeting, but it had been discussed certainly at the staff level in terms of other options. Hence, the applicant is before you this evening looking at rezonings as well as PUD concept plan is another option.
It was discussed and it was one of the findings.
Okay, thank you.
Because as I understand it, with the change in zoning, they do comply as far as the allowable minimum lot width in order to divide it into two lots.
That is correct. And another option, we did discuss with them at one point too, was the PUD concept plan, final plan is an option as well.
Yeah, but I just wanted to make sure that that was a finding of the board, that this was a remedy that the applicant had in order to be in compliance.
Okay, as Mr. McDonald noted, yes. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
The applicant, please make your presentation.
My name is Brian Hill. I'm an attorney for the applicant and my address is 2900 Northeast- I'm an attorney for the applicant, and my address is twenty-nine hundred Northeast Brooktree Lane in Gladstone, Missouri. I think that a lot of this has already been covered by Mr. Allen, but briefly. I don't want to waste the Commission's time. Basically, this is a seventeen-point-three acre tract. It is very irregular in shape. The terrain is very rough. There are cliffs, there's a creek that runs through it. The applicant has his home on this site, and he wants to be able to divide it into two lots so that his son can also build a house there. The property is currently bounded on the north and on the south by subdivisions that are zoned SF-7, and they're all single-family homes. Right now, it's zoned residential estate. We would like to rezone this to SF-7 with a restricted overlay. The SF-7 zoning would allow for a much more dense use, and we don't want that. I mean, it's kind of like a park in there now, and we want to retain that character. And that's the reason for the restricted overlay, which would limit this to two lots. Unless they came back and went through this entire process again, there would never be more than two lots or two single-family homes on this seventeen-acre tract. They would share one driveway, so there would not be another curb cut. And we believe that the drive would be on lot two. It would come in just to the right or south of that property line, and there would be a cross-easement agreement to where both homes and both residences would use the common driveway. And that's one of the staff conditions, I believe. The SF-7 only requires sixty-five feet of frontage on Valley View Road. Right now, there's a hundred-and-sixty-two feet of road frontage there, so we wouldn't require any kind of a variance. The restricted overlay was actually something we requested of city staff because we didn't want to ask the Commission to make this something that was available for more dense development. That's never been our request or our desire. There have been some strained relations with neighbors in the past, and I think if any of you have reviewed the BZA meeting minutes, you would see that. Those arose from some problems with DNR that came up several years ago. There were some people on Lake Tapawingo that had problems with debris being flushed into the lake when there were heavy rains. And DNR determined that that was the result of some illegal dumping in the creek in this Richards Estates property. And we determined that it was lawn clippings, other debris, yard waste that was being placed on the property from certain adjacent neighbors. The Richards wrote to the neighbors, kind of a kind note, and asked them to not do that anymore. Several of the neighbors took offense, and nothing has cleared up since then. I think some of the dumping has ceased, but there's still some issues there. So there's some rough relations with the neighbors that have resulted from that. There is the additional staff condition in there as to parking of contractors' equipment. We haven't done that in the past. I think that right now, there may be a bobcat sitting on the property, and it's there to do some driveway repairs. The road washed out with all the rain we've had, and they're trying to repair that, but it's not anything that's going to be there. We haven't parked contractors' equipment there in the past, don't intend to do so in the future. It's a residence. And we have reviewed and are in agreement with all the recommended conditions, both on the rezoning request and on the preliminary plat. I really have nothing further.
Other questions for Mr. Hill?
Oh, Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Mr. Hill, could you just show me where the existing house is?
Let me ask Mr. Anderson to pinpoint.
Because I can't tell.
Or Mr. Richards. Mr. Richards, could you be sworn in?
You'll have to be sworn in, please. Please state your name.
David Richards, forty-two hundred Northwest Valley View.
Or on the other one, the other one might be easier.
There's a proposed house.
Right.
That's where I live right now, that's existing.
Oh, the proposed house is existing?
That's, this is an old plot plan.
Oh, okay.
Where this proposed barn is, is where the actual proposed house is going to be. This one's an existing house, this is my house. This is where my boy was wanting to build a place right here.
Okay. All right, thank you. Clarifies for me.
Are there other questions for Mr. Hill? Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there members of the audience that would like to speak in favor of this? Yes. Favor. One here first.
Thank you. My name is Bill Mooney. I live at fourteen-oh-nine Walling Ford Place in Blue Springs. As the crow flies, or however you want to place it, I live three or four blocks from Mr. Richards. I'm here this evening to speak to the quality and character of Mr. Richards. It was terribly berated at the last meeting, and it needs to be spoken to. I work for a company called Western Blue. Western Blue works with the architectural, engineering, and construction community. We generate engineering drawings, architectural drawings, renderings, specification books for whatever is needed for any project that's being built. Eight to ten years ago was when I first met Mr. Richards, delivering products that we produced at Western Blue for construction projects he was working on. All of my relationships with Mr. Richards have been what I would consider very fine business relationships. He's an easy man to work with. During that period of time, I learned that Mr. Richards was building a home, as you saw, located here. It's a very unique structure. I don't know if you're aware of it. It's very environmentally and very environmentally concerned and built in a very unique fashion. And he invited me to come by his home at that time and to see how it was being put together, how it was built in the construction aspect of it. So I feel like I know him a little bit more than business, but we're not buddies by any stretch of the imagination. But he was very cordial, he was very open, very willing to share what he was doing. And I found him to be a, just a man of real, real character and real quality. And I'd like that to be placed in the record, so that'll be stated before. So that'll be stated.
Any questions for Mr. Mooney? Thank you. Are there others that would like to speak in favor?
My name is Bruce Herndon. The land in question was my family's farm. And when civilization started encroaching on it, we decided we had to sell. We were having people with all-terrain vehicles, cutting our fences, and dogs. We're having a lot of problems, so we decided to sell the land. We sold the land on the west side to a developer who determined that the land Mr. Richards has now was undevelopable. And then, so he just developed the land to the west. And Tom Woods, who I think most of you know, developed the land to the east. And he also determined that this land Mr. Richards has now was undevelopable. So we kind of saw Mr. Richards coming, and we took his money. And he does not want to make a development there. In fact, he can't make a development there. It's just too rough a property. There's rock bluffs, they called it a creek. It's just about a canyon that runs down through that property. So he's not trying to develop the property. He just wants a lot for his son. Thank you.
Are there questions? Thank you. Do you want to speak in favor?
Okay, I live in Valley View, I'm sorry, I live in Creek Side Estates. I was the first house that was built in the Creek Side Estates area. Matter of fact, my home is, if I look in my back deck, I am directly in front of Mr. Richards. A couple of questions I have first, before I get going here, is the creek itself. You know, I've been there fourteen years, taking care of my land, and I take care of it very, very well. Spend a lot of money on my lawn and my home, keeping it up nice. And the creek has always been something that, you know, we've gone down in and looked for arrowheads and stuff like that. Just, I don't have, I have one child that's three, so she's not going down there yet. But there has been a lot of kids going down there. And in fourteen years, I have not seen any problems down there whatsoever. One question I have is, the first question I have is the boundary lines of this creek. Is the creek part of Mr. Richards' estate, or is the creek a, what would you call, a a common ground that is part of the city of Blue Springs, Missouri, that we can all go in if we wish to? The reason I ask this is because there have been a few times, and I'm speaking for the neighbors, that we have been threatened by the landowner. Someone has told me with guns, and these are kids, that have gone down there, been threatened with guns and stuff like that. And it's been a concern, of course, for us parents, that, you know, if the kids want to go down and play in the creek, it's not a great idea. But at the same time, it's even worse idea when you're getting a gun pointed at you and telling you to leave the creek when you're fourteen years old or twelve years old.
Sir, are you speaking in favor of this, or in opposition?
I am speaking in favor of this. I am speaking in favor, just so you know.
Yes, excuse me, just a second. Mr. McDonald?
Answer his question. It's all private property. I mean, it's where it actually divides, I don't know. But it would either be your property or his property, wherever you all butt up against each other. There's no city problem.
So basically, the creek is both of ours.
I don't know which side of the lines it's on. It may be all on his line.
Okay, well, I was completely against this plan at first. I can honestly say that. At this time, I am completely for it. The reason I am for it is because, for one, you know, we did get off on a bad start from the beginning. I was there fourteen years. When Mr. Richards moved there, he sent, his attorney sent a letter to us. The letter that was sent to us is very vulgar and very nasty, I'll be honest with you. Nobody standing in this room right here would, if they seen it, would appreciate it whatsoever. I actually had to send an email telling them, "How dare you send this email." But anyway, the only thing that I ask the committee today is to make sure that all code violations, and I would like to see him build a house for his son. I think it's only fair, because I would want to be in his shoes. I would want to build a house for my son. I just want to make sure, and I think I'm speaking for the neighbors, because a lot of them had talked to me, that the code violations in the are really kept up on very strictly. Allow him to build his house. Make sure that there aren't going to be problems with the erosion for the neighbors up on top of the hill. Just those items, we do have concerns about. I don't want to make this a personal issue anymore. I'm sure Mr. Richards is a nice gentleman, but I want to make sure he knows that he's got a lot of great neighbors that are going to be looking out for his house. And if I ever see anybody back there that's not supposed to be back there, I'll be damned if I'm not going to call the police for him and make sure he's protected. So what I'm asking is that we make sure that when they do go to build this house, and I'm asking that the council approve this for Mr. Richards, that every code is looked into and made sure that it is in order so his son can have a nice home. And, but I do want to make sure that this is the only home that can be built on that lot. But I am asking that this home be approved.
Are there any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Others that would like to speak in favor of this? Please state your names.
My name is Gary Harden. This is my wife, Kitty.
Kitty Harden.
We live at forty-seven-twenty Northwest Pennington Lane in Blue Springs. We've known the Richards, my wife, for twenty years, and myself, for sixteen, and have been friends with them ever since. When we found out the property was sold, we too were a little bit disheartened because we were told by our builder, the developer told them, that it was undevelopable. But when we found out it was them, that was okay with us. That was great. We know their boy, Ben, as well as Wes, and Ben's wife, Megan. And we're pleased that they want to build there as well. They are a wonderful family and wonderful friends. There have been stress relationships, it's very obvious. But there also have been some very good things that have happened when the neighbors approached them and asked them questions. And Kitty has a couple of examples of that.
Let's see, I think early on, when the Richards moved in, there, one of the neighbors went to their house, and he said, "I built an outbuilding in our yard." And he said, "I'm really sorry if you want me to move it, I can. I didn't realize I had crossed the lines." And Dave said, "You know what? You're fine, just leave it there, that's okay, you didn't know." And he was just very generous to this neighbor, and he didn't have to move his building at all. And then there was a time, not too long ago, where their youngest son, Joe, was, I think it was just Joe, was driving a three-wheeler or a four-wheeler, and it was pretty loud. And so one of the neighbors, who's a good friend of mine, went over and spoke to his wife and said, "Did you know that this is really loud?" And his wife said, "What can I do? I want to make things right, so what can I do? What do you want me to do?" And the neighbor said, "Could you just have the boys not ride after seven o'clock? Because, you know, we can hear it, we're trying to watch movies and eat dinner." And she said, "It's done, we'll do that." And then the boys, there was never a problem. And in fact, this neighbor came to me because she knows that we have a long-term relationship with the Richards. And she shared that with me, and she said, "I was just so pleased that they worked with us just instantly and wanted to make that compromise and work with us and be good neighbors."
Any questions? Thank you. Are there others that would like to speak in favor of this? Please state your names.
Vicky Montesano.
Mel Montesano.
And we live at eight-two-one Northwest Golden Court, and we are just to the south. We live in Apple Valley, which Tom Woods developed. So we're on the other side of Creek Side Estates. And we've known the Richards for a little over four years. Their youngest son goes to school with our boys at Plazite's Christian Academy. We've known them to be good neighbors, parents, and friends. Before, we were familiar with the Richards. We also got the letter that this gentleman is talking about. And I didn't find it offensive at all, it was just very direct. And kind of understood what they were talking about because when we first moved into our property, we were one of the first houses there. And we would have people rolling their have people rolling their trash cans down our street and through our backyard and through our neighbor's yard to dump trash on the Richards' property. You know, at the time, I didn't know it was the Richards' property. We put up a fence, so we, you know, took care of that problem, people coming through our yard. But I know that that was, that must have been a problem for them at the time. They're petitioning to build this house for their son and daughter-in-law, and we are here to support their request for that. I don't see any negative effect on anyone in the neighborhood for them to build this house.
Yes, as Vicky stated, the property, because it's very secluded, is kind of inviting for people to come by and dump things. It really is, as we've seen and lived there. So, they just kind of wanted to make their presence known. Says, "We live here. There's a house here. There's people that live here." So, anyway, I think that's what was behind a lot of that, plus they're protecting their property and their families. So, again, we've known them for a long time and actually his mother and his sister too for probably 12, 14 years or something like that. So...
Good people.
They're good people.
True to their word.
Yeah, excited that they're building a house for their son. Yeah, thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Are there others that would speak in favor of this? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak in opposition? All right, just for another couple of minutes.
Sure, I'll just speak for a minute. I just want to say I don't speak out of both sides of my mouth and I serve the Lord Jesus Christ and I live my life like that. And all these accusations that have been brought up against me, if they can prove it, they need to call the police. They need to call whoever they need to call. But what was done to me at this last meeting was wrong. And I just want to say that. And I want to do what's right here and you guys do whatever you deem correct here. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone that would like to speak in opposition to this? Bring it back up here. Any comments on the record?
Mr. Chairman, I have some concerns here, not over the applicant or the application, but I'm assuming now, the way this is set up, you are completely surrounded by subdivisions. Are you still having trouble with dumping on your property?
I have, I have issues, yes. But, you know, I deal with them when it comes to pertinent, the old issues, you know, like Kitty and them were saying, you know, I just let them slide. I said, "That's fine." You know, you guys have done all these buildings on my property and everything else. And the creek is on my property. And the thing with the creek was I didn't want, people were coming mowing down onto my property and if an accident would happen, the kid would get hurt in the creek. You know as well as I do, they're not going to be liable for it. They would make me liable for it. And that's what I would tell them. We didn't go after anybody with guns and knives and such as that, which, you know, they want to put some sort of thing in your mind that thinks that's some sort of animal. And I'm not. I just said, you know, we can't have this kind of encroachment. And that's what the letter was about, that Brian was talking about. You know, the encroachment was horrible.
Well, I just want, as I said, I just wanted to know, since there's personal property completely surrounding you, people shouldn't be dumping anything on your property. They'd have to cut through somebody's yard, I assume, to get to it.
Pardon me?
They'd have to cut through somebody else's yard to get to your property.
Well, for instance, for your information, right when I was building the house, a guy dug an above-ground swimming pool and it backed towards a slope like that. And to put a swimming pool in, you'd have to have a level spot. Well, he dug his level spot and he put all the dirt on my property. I kept hearing this machinery up on the hill. So, I go up there and he's got his pond and his yard's nice and everything. And I ask him, I said, "What's the problem there?" And he said, "Well, I got a nice yard." I said, "Well, you dumped all of your dirt on my property and you pretty much like sorry for your bad luck." And I told him, I said, you know, and to make a long story short, I just let him go too. I said, "You know, I could take you to court." And he was, "You know, I don't have time for fighting every 52 neighbors." And, you know, it gets rather ridiculous. And if you'd have been here that last meeting, I mean, you can read the statement that he dictated the whole thing. I mean, it's quite astounding.
Are there other comments for the record? There is another statement in favor of this. I think all of you have a copy of that. Yes, one, just one second.
No, I just want to tell Mr. Richards, I just want to let you know that we want to be good neighbors. The letter that you sent us, you sent us, a lot of people took it offensive because of the way it was written. I know that you probably did not mean that as directly and directly toward an individual. I know there's obviously been some areas of your ground that have been being dumped on. So, the last meeting was not a good meeting. I tell you, it was a personal meeting. That's why I'm here today for our neighbors, because I do want him to build his house back there. I want him to be a good neighbor. I want to make sure that he understands that we are good neighbors and that we will be here for them if they need us and vice versa. I understand the top of the lots roll downhill. What he's doing is not going to affect my land because our lands are flat. What he's doing, I don't want to affect the lands above us for erosion. But I don't blame him whatsoever for being upset. But I do want him to build a house for his son. I think it'd be a good thing for the council to allow him to do this. It's a beautiful piece of land and I think it should go through. I think it should be approved.
Close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'd make a motion that we approve the rezoning, RZ 1009 2360, for Richards Meadow. Subject to any staff comments?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the rezoning. Have a roll call vote.
Commissioner Parker?
Aye.
Abbott?
Aye.
Henni?
Aye.
Banks?
Aye.
Trozen?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
May?
Aye.
Culpepper?
Aye.
Franklin?
Aye.
Haney?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman?
All right.
I would recommend approval of preliminary plat, PP 1009 2361, for Richards Meadow. Subject to any staff comments?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve a preliminary plat. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. All right, you have approval for that. Only other business that I know of is this Blue Springs Board of Zoning Adjustment has a public meeting on Thursday, November 12th from 4:00 to 7:00 in this facility. I would urge everybody to attend that. That's pertaining to the Woods Chapel Road improvements from I-70 to south of Briarwood Drive in Jackson County.
Mr. Chairman?
Are there any other?
I'm sorry to clarify. That was addressed to the Board of Adjustment. It's actually the city of Blue Springs is holding that.
Okay.
You may have all gotten a personal invitation, perhaps not.
I did.
I just want to make sure that the one I received on behalf of the Board of Adjustment was, so you did see a copy of the public notice. But yes, please, if you're able to attend, please do so. And again, personal invitations hopefully were sent to everybody.
Is there any other items of business?
Move to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Meeting adjourned.